Okay. With that, I'm going to close public testimony. We are officially through that stack. Thank you very much.[9.25][9.25](APPLAUSE). So, I think what we'd like to do is sort of try and conclude this one now, if we could. If we could go to commission comment at this point. Does anybody want to try and jump into that first?[26.41][26.41](LAUGHTER). Okay. Before anybody does, let's start with maybe a -- I'm going to try and synopsize what I heard here today. I think I heard from those who -- well, it's difficult for me to sort through. Some people were quite clear about their -- in favor or opposed to it, and there were some nuanced positions between all that, of course. And I think what I heard from a number of people who were in favor of the ordinance was a sense that there was groups that said that the ordinance didn't go far enough in terms of protecting neighborhoods or protecting sensitive receptor uses. There were those who were in support of the ordinance as written. There were various supports for a variety of other interpretations from the code monitoring team, the CPC, or other sources. I also heard from people who were opposed to the project, the primary theme that I heard out of those opposed to this was the notion that an overly restrictive access creates issues and hardships for people who need the medicine. Is that a fair summation? So, I think that really what we have to kind of sort through here is whether or not, from a land use perspective, is the ordinance doing what's necessary to implement California law? Is it doing so in a way that's fair and equitable? And is it doing so in a way that is providing fair access while protecting needs that may have some legitimate concerns about proximity? So, that's how I understand the issue of discussion. Commissioner Lyden, would you like to jump in here?
Yes, I just have a few questions to get things going. I'm a little confused about the zoning, the commercial, the community commercial zoning. What is being recommended and what is being excluded? Can you help me out on that, Mr. Hill?
On the community commercial zones, the intention of the Land Use and Housing Committee was to exclude all commercial zones that also had allowed residential uses, with the exception of the watchkeepers' quarters. And so, the zones, the community commercial 2-1, 2-2, and 2-3 zones are the zone categories that are community commercial that don't allow residential except for the watchkeeper quarters.
Okay. And the Medical Marijuana Task Force had recommended Process 2 for less than 100 members and Process 3 for more than 100 members. Mr. Hill, could you tell us why Land Use and Housing then wanted to move with the Process 4?
I think that after listening to their constituents, the council members on the committee felt that, you know, that they wanted to support something more restrictive.
And under the city attorney's guidance, they were -- it says additional distance requirement of 1,000 feet for parks and places of worship. Is that 1,000 feet beyond the 1,000 feet that was being recommended by the task force? So, would that be 2,000 feet, or was that just 1,000?
The task force did not recommend a distance buffer between dispensaries and parks and places of worship. So, the Land Use and Housing Committee added those uses as requiring a buffer.
Of 1,000 feet?
1,000 feet.
Okay. Very good. And then, I'm just curious, if a pharmacy was going to move into a building, what kind of process would they have to go through?
I'd have to refer that to Development Services staff.
Yeah, I'd like to have Dan Joyce come to the microphone. He's our expert on the code.
Dan Joyce, depending on the base zone, a pharmacy could go in by right. Certain base zones, certain commercial base zones would allow a pharmacy to go in without any permit other than a building permit.[301.64][301.64](LAUGHTER).
And then, lastly, just to get started here, the existing dispensaries, they need to come into compliance to the new ordinance. But how long would they have to become compliant?
There's not a grace period built into the ordinance.
So, that would be effective immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all for now.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Smiley?
I had a couple of questions, but the speakers aren't here. The couple of speakers that brought up the police permitting rule. Can you comment any on that, Mr. Hill, as far as in any of the discussions in that? There was nothing necessarily in the report here, but...
This ordinance addresses the land use impact or aspects of medical marijuana dispensaries. The Medical Marijuana Task Force did consider the police issues, and so perhaps one of the members of the task force can speak to that question?
I don't recall who.
I lost my sidekick from the task force. Here we go. Pastor Riggs was on the task force.
Yes, we did consider that, but we thought that if you look at how the police permitting goes for places that dispense alcohol, for instance, they generally are approved because the state, the county, the city are all strapped for revenue, and every permit that is approved brings in revenue. Since we -- the task force felt we were dealing with something that was technically not legal, that we would have the same problem with that because of the federal laws regarding marijuana. And so, we did not think it wise to require police permitting for medical marijuana dispensaries.
Okay. So, it was the permitting. The reason -- I wanted to pull the thread because what I'm concerned about, we're talking about the restrictions of it being overly restrictive or not restrictive, but it comes up from time to time before the commission where we talk about code enforcement. So, am I correct in presuming that any enforcement of the ordinance would be through the code enforcement organization? Is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Because where I'm coming from, and I was -- I've listened to, like everybody else, listened to all the testimony, but my concern and my background is the neighborhoods and that. My concern to protect the sanctity of the neighborhood and the ability to people to joy pursue happiness. And I'm looking at it from that angle. I'm not sitting in any moral judgment, but that's just so you know where I'm coming from on this. And there were some things that were extrapolated out that I don't necessarily agree with. Getting from 1,000-foot radius to 25 miles and all of that. So, I just wanted to get that out there.
Commissioner Gobba?
Mr. Hill, I'm not sure if this goes to you or city staff. Right now, there was testimony that currently you can't legally be open in the city of San Diego for collective, correct?
That's correct.
So, what is the intent of the city staff as far as, you know, if this passes today, there's no sort of grandfather period? Or will code enforcement continue to seek closure of those in the interim even if they're applying for a permit? Or how is that all set up or anticipated to work when this finally does pass to City Council?
The Land Use and Housing Committee was explicitly clear that there would be no grandfather clause, so there's no grandfather clause built in.
And so, then is, and I don't know if this goes to your city attorney's office or what, but are we currently, is the city actively trying to close all of these through the woman who gave the testimony of the notice of violations or what? Or how do they happen, those that are sort of out there in the fog right now?
The actions that are going forward as neighborhood code violations are done by our criminal division, and there's a wall between where I work, the civil division, and the criminal division. It is my understanding that notices of violation have been issued for a variety of different types of offenses. It would be within the neighborhood code department's purview and the prosecutor's purview as to which cases they felt were worthy of pursuing.
And assuming that an ordinance passes and, you know, whichever institution it is that this address is currently operating in the eyes of the city illegally, but the ordinance passes and, you know, a month later, once they've done all the paperwork, they submit for a permit, will that bear into the code enforcement action then, that they're at least in a pipeline trying to become legalized or...
I can't say whether it would or not, but I know that you commonly see people in code violation situations coming before you to remedy that through getting a permit.
Okay. So, at least that would give an open collective a chance to say, "I'm on the process. I'm trying to do it a certain amount of time," or something like that, to become legalized then. And then, I guess, Mr. Hill, some of these comments that we've got from all the different bodies that have seen this, some of them involve a certain level of enforcement down the road. For example, the Medical Marijuana Task Force said that there were different processes for the number of members. Did Land Use and Housing consider any of those simply because of the logistics and city staffing and budget cuts of being able to monitor something like that? I mean, or were -- was it ever given any serious consideration to allow a, I think Mr. LaCava called it a process for light, or, you know, in this case, obviously a 3 or a 2 that would allow either a smaller institution or one that, I don't know, met all the criteria, a streamlined path to get in?
The intention of the committee was to have the City Council have a role in the decision-making process. So, that was the reason they went with Process 4.
And so, that would mean that their intent was by starting it for its appealable to City Council as opposed to a 3, which kind of comes to us, but then it can only be, I believe, appealed on environmental terms, correct?
Correct.
So, that would then, they willingly and knowingly asked for it to be able to come to them?[731.04][731.04](LAUGHTER) And they were aware of this decision, right?
They were.
Okay. And then, there was testimony, and Commissioner Smiley sort of touched on it. I just want to make sure we got it. Several people talked about it being a police-regulated business. What exactly are we talking about that? Is there really a known path or process for that? Or is that just sort of a generic term that you want the police to sort of monitor it? Or is there actually something, I guess similar to liquor store might be or something like that where the police would have an input on it? And if so, did you, Land Use and Housing, look at that avenue?
Land Use and Housing did not look at that avenue. I refer the remainder of that question to Mr. Joyce.[776.01][776.01](LAUGHTER).
Who looks confident in his answer?
Let me hear that question again because I don't know how I'm involved in it.
I'll rephrase it for you. Was there ever consideration as far as in the drafting of this ordinance that it does become, I believe the term was, a police-regulated use? And is that a term that we're familiar with from as far as our land use and code writing? Or is it some generic term that wants to bring more coverage into it?
I will address a portion of it. First of all, Development Services was not involved in the drafting of this ordinance. I would assume that there may be two venues for regulating this. One would be through land use issues and they put code compliance, and the other may be through police actions depending on the situation. I think Shannon Thomas might be able to help a little also.
While Land Use and Housing was meeting, PSNS was also meeting on the public safety portion, and out of PSNS came the recommendations for the background checks and things of that nature. There was no department identified as to who would do those checks, who would ensure that the businesses were operating in compliance with the operational standards that had been set. The IBA did do a report for council on the anticipated costs if it were police-regulated, so they are looking at that. And one of the recommendations of, it could have been both committees, I can't recall, was to make it cost-neutral through cost recovery. So, whether it's the land use permit or a police operational permit or some other department, there would be fees associated with those permits.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I'm not sure who this goes to, but there was compelling testimony from one of the, I guess you'd call it opponents to the thing, regarding the meeting the basic criteria to justify a process for hearing level. Can you sort of just summarize what Land Use and Housing, are you confident that this type of use meets the criteria to demand a process for? And the finding, I think the Topanga case was referenced a number of times. Tell me about the process that did arrive to make it a process for beyond just having the City Council have the ability to hear it on appeal.
I think, well, I'd like to refer the legal aspects of that question to the city attorney. The Land Use and Housing Committee, I think, considered the various processes and decided that they wanted to go with Process 4.
As far as what, the action that's before you today and the action that will be taken to the City Council is legislation. I'm not completely sure about your question, but as far as for a discretionary permit, if there was a discretionary permit before you and there were findings in the municipal code that you had to make, you would need substantial evidence in the record to support your findings for the discretionary permit. As far as the legal standard for the city passing legislation, particularly for zoning laws, the city simply needs a rational basis for passing that legislation. So, it's a difference between the legislative process and the discretionary process.
Okay. Thank you. And last question is just getting back to, I believe it was Ms. Valentine, who had done the analysis of the different zones and the impact and the number of parcels and all that. And I was wondering, have you guys seen that report prior to today and/or can you comment on it?
We've seen portions of it. The portions with the zones and the, you know, the circles around the 1,000-foot buffers, and that's similar to what's in your backup material. The number of parcels in each category, I had not seen before today.
Okay. So, you can't, I believe it's 191 is listed under if we adopt it as written. You can't comment to the accuracy.
We haven't analyzed that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hill. That's it for now.
Relative to that, I think the testimony, and I have no conflicting evidence as to this otherwise, but in that testimony, councilman, I'm sorry, that Commissioner Gobba was talking about is the size and the number of applicable parcels that this applies to depending on which version of the ordinance is accepted. And in this current city attorney office's draft proposal, the public testimony suggested 31 parcels in the entire city. Now, I don't have a way of knowing if that's accurate, well-resured, whatever. It was, you know, presented with some level of convincing authority. However, I don't have a secondary resource to tell me otherwise, but I can tell you that makes me very concerned. 31 parcels in the entire city is beyond restrictive.[1081.33][1081.33](APPLAUSE). So, I gotta say, that one, that, you know, I don't know where we're going to go with this, but if that is in fact true, that just is, that does not even begin to meet the minimum standard of care about how to put this out there. I need to kind of understand, I would think the City Council, before they make a final decision here, needs to take what's in this presentation and backcheck it because if this is real, this is a problem.
Chairman Nelson, I thought that was clarified, that there was a transposition of those IL parcel numbers, and so that's why I think Commissioner Gobba mentioned 191 is just being the...
Could you come up? I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
Kate Valentine.
Say it again?
Kate Valentine.
Kate Valentine.
Yes.
Okay. So, you made a point about the transposition of numbers in the zone.
Yes.
So, if that were corrected, would the 31 parcel still be correct?
No, it would be 97 parcels.
97 parcels. Okay. So, there is probably an error in that, and if the error were corrected based on the intentions as you understand them, we'd be 1097 parcels citywide.
Yeah, and it's, it was really just the point, just to show that it was just transpose the 3-1 versus the 1-3. So, that 31 parcels is just reflecting exactly what is written.
Yes.
Including the typo.
And your testimony was that there is no IL-1-3 zone.
Correct.
But there is an IL-3-1 zone.
Correct.
And your presumption is that that was the intention?
Yes. Yes. Based on all the other documents from the Land Use and Housing Subcommittee, councilmember Todd Gloria, time after time, it says IL-3-1.
Okay.
And I think we talked about that this morning.
Okay. All right. So, 97 still seems overly restricted to me, but that's just my opinion.[1199.01][1199.01](APPLAUSE). Any other commissioner comments? We need to make some sort of recommendation here to City Council. I need to, there is a point here where this is not a particular process. If you could clarify that part of this deliberation today?
The item before you is before you under the state law that requires the planning commission to hold a public hearing when a zoning, sorry, when a zoning ordinance is going to the City Council. So, it's not like a Process 5 where you're making a recommendation, but I think that the intent of staff is for you to go ahead and list your recommendations and send them on to the City Council.
So, the implications of that are, we don't necessarily need a 4 votes here. What we'll do is we make a motion as we always would, but if it were 3-2, for instance, that would still go forward as a position of the planning commission with all the comments that come with it. So, just so we're clear on that piece. Is there a sense about what we want to say to the planning commission or to the City Council, sorry? Commissioner Griswold?
Okay. I'll go ahead and put a motion out here. We'll just see where it goes. I've heard a lot of testimony back and forth. I have some personal experiences with the advent of the unregulated medical marijuana, being in the real estate management business. There's statistics here that talk about crime in my neighborhood, but doesn't include the armed robbery of the collective that was in my building. So, I think that that's maybe understated. So, I'm not really in favor of unregulated facilities. We can pass this off to the City Council with the proposed following motion. I'd like the motion to include colleges and universities, though, in the 1,000-foot distance separation. I do think that's an important element, and I think the college communities have spoken pretty clearly on that, and it was also a fairly close vote. So, I'm going to propose that we recommend the City Council approve the proposed amendments and that they also include colleges and universities in that 1,000-foot distance separation. There may be other potentially friendly amendments that other people want to raise, but that's my start.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. So, motion by Commissioner Griswold, a second by Commissioner Smiley. And just to be clear, the, what we're, what the motion is about is the staff recommendation with the addition of the additional buffer from colleges to universities in your motion. Is that correct? Okay. Discussion on that motion? Commissioner Lyden first?
I'd also like to propose that we make this a Process 3 because I think Process 4 is too prohibitive. I'd also like us to consider that we need to find more allowable land uses. There's just too few. And then, thirdly, I believe there needs to be a grace period for the existing dispensaries to become compliant.[1416.83][1416.83](APPLAUSE).
So, are those friendly amendments?
Friendly amendments.
And what about the makers of motions, seconders? Are you supportive of those points?
We should do them one at a time, just for clarity.
Okay. The first one was the Process 3 instead of Process 4.
I'd like to try it without. I'm willing to consider that, but I think I want to try the motion without that.
Okay. All right. So, what about the more allowable land or zones for it to be applicable in?
I'm opposed to that.
Okay. How about the grace period?
That's a difficult one. I think no grace period is maybe unreasonable, but I'd like a short period of time. I think with somebody proposed a year, I think that's too long. I would be willing to consider six months.
What about the seconder of that motion?
I could agree. I could agree with that.
Okay. So, of the friendly amendments offered, the only one accepted by the maker of the motion and the seconder was the grace period of six months. So, still, the motion is Process 4 at this moment. Okay. So, any additional discussion? Commissioner Smiley?
I'd be interested to hear fellow commissioners' thoughts on it. I want some protection for residential areas, not necessarily 1,000 feet, maybe 600. I know there's a recommendation by the code monitoring team that the distances be the same as for liquor outlets. But I'd just be interested if there's any support or any thoughts on the neighborhoods or residential areas.
I'm open to that, but how do we do that? Is there city staff or somebody want to, Mr. Joyce, any suggestion on how that would work?
I would defer to Land Use and Housing rep and the city attorneys on that.
I'm sorry. Could you say that again? There was a distraction behind you that I consider inappropriate.
I'm sorry. I would defer to Stephen Hill with Land Use and Housing and Shannon Thomas with the city attorney's office on that question.
Okay. You're on the spot, Mr. Hill.
Would you rephrase the question, please?
Well, Commissioner Smiley, go ahead.
A restriction of, and I picked 600 feet because that's the same for where children are and outlets that sell alcohol. And I'd like to bring this in parallel for this, to have the restriction of a radius of 600 feet to residential areas prohibition.
I think it was referring to, is one of the very first speakers. I wrote a note. Speaker wants to add residential neighborhoods with a barrier of 1,000 feet is what she was proposing. Commissioner Smiley is suggesting some type of a barrier to residential neighborhoods of 600 feet. He's comparing that to alcohol or some other type of use that's currently subject to that level.
Which was in the report for the code monitoring team. It was kind of the genesis of the thought. And then, when the speakers, the first two speakers, they mentioned about the neighborhood they're in, and I'm just looking at some type of protection, maybe not necessarily 1,000 feet, but since children and, the rationale for alcohol outlets was 600 feet where children are. Well, children are in residential areas anyhow, so as opposed to one of the other recommendations of 1,000 feet, I was looking at 600 feet.
I can analyze that and have it included as an option in the presentation to the City Council.
Okay. I'd be good with that.
Commissioner Gobba?
All right. Just getting back to, I think, the intent of Commissioner Lyden's query into how do we make it potentially more open up? I don't know that we can define that right now because we obviously can't pull out a zoning map and start picking zones. But I think if possible, I'd like the motion to occur something that between now and the time it gets to City Council is that staff has a chance to analyze basically the number of parcels that qualify. Because I think of everything we've seen today, this map that Ms. Valentine did is potentially the most damning, you know, especially if you took it, obviously the typo's not correct, that's not the intent, but even at 97 parcels, that's pretty restrictive. You assume half of those are either not available, landlords wouldn't consider even renting to it. Now, we're down to basically 50 sites in the whole city that would be applicable. That's probably overly restrictive in anybody's eyes. So, I would like to think that, you know, maybe you can exchange data or do your own research, but if this proceeds forward as written as a recommendation, it would be nice for council to know exactly how many parcels it applies to because I think that's a huge piece of information to make a decision on. Again, we're just recommending, but when you look at those potential numbers citywide, that's pretty amazing.
I would agree with that. I think that particularly with the amendments that we've discussed here, I really have no way of analyzing or knowing what are we talking about in terms of what's left. I mean, we've sort of cordoned off all the areas, we can't do this. And another thing I'd point out about the alcohol piece is that the 600 feet really is the threshold by which you initiate a condition use permit, not that there's an outright restriction at 600 feet. So, that's a little different than an outright restriction. So, that's something that also has me a little bit concerned about. So, I agree that whatever we go forward with, I think there's some more thorough analysis between what the, what various proposals are and what that ultimately means about what's available out there to do this. I think without that information, I don't know how any... I think without that information, I don't know how anybody can make a rational and reasonable decision. And I think our decision-makers deserve that kind of information at the very least. So, I mean presently, I can't support the motion right now based on that, but I don't know where we all stand.
Could you clarify that? The residential element is not in the motion?
Yeah, no, it is, it's not presently in the motion, that's right. So, unless you're making that an amendment and asking the maker to take that on as well? No?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Well, as is presently constructed, I can't support it. So, I think that, I don't have enough information to feel good about where we're going. I think, here's the things that I take away from this experience or from this testimony is that there are indeed places where, in this city, where dispensaries probably should be buffered against other kinds of sensitive receptors. I think there are in fact, that the dispensaries need to be regulated in some fashion, the same way we regulate just about every other land use in this city. So, those things, those things have to happen, at the very least. And I think in conformance with state law, which is in conflict with federal law about this material in general, we have to be sort of extra careful about that piece of it, in my mind. So, I do believe there are receptors, whether or not residential neighborhoods, what's the appropriate distance, I think that's probably an acceptable sensitive receptor. But I'd want to make absolutely certain that it wasn't so overly restrictive as to essentially become an outright ban, and I think that that's where the present ordinance is heading. And I just, and frankly, the voters of California have had their say about this. The state law has a particular attitude about it, whether you agree or don't agree with that vote or that way that law is in place, is presently the law of the state of California. And I think it's up to us, and we have testimony from people here who rely on this, and I am convinced by that testimony, that I think it's, that it's incumbent upon us to provide humane and safe treatment where possible with trying to balance this against these issues about sensitive receptors and how that influences or impacts those things. So, it's a very difficult balance. I don't envy the City Council on this piece, frankly, but that's why they ran for the spot and raised all that money to do it. So, I'm going to let them, let them do it. But frankly, I, as motion's presently constructed, I really feel strongly that we need to have places where this can be put in in a well-regulated fashion, and I don't feel that there's enough of it now in this present motion. Other comments, or should we vote on where we stand? Okay, are we ready to vote then? Okay, so that motion is three in favor, two opposed. So, the recommendation to the City Council will be as the motion was stated with all the dialogue and recommendations that came with it. And so, that's it for that item, and I guess I'll turn all of you over to the City Council hearing when it's docketed to take your case to that one. So, we're going to take a five-minute break until we go to the next item.